So we'll get this meeting started. It's five thirty. First item on the agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Here she comes. Perfect timing.
You gotta say the pledge yourself now.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call. Please note that all members of the council are present. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. To the best of my knowledge, we don't have any of either. So Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
The move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the minutes of January third, twenty twenty-two. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Betty, did you look into that?
Did not find it.
Okay. Okay, that's not a big deal, one way or another. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the minutes of Monday, January tenth, the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion carries four for the motion and one abstention. Next, we go to payments and claims. We have a transfer to the four oh one public improvement of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. That's coming evenly distributed from the six oh one water and the six oh three sewer in equal amounts of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. We have funds going to reserve for capital outlay of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and forty-two cents. That's coming from the six oh one water in the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventeen cents. And from the six oh three sewer in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. For a total transfers of ninety-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eight cents. Accounts payable in claims, regular international, City of International Falls claims of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents. Airport Commission claims of six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and eight cents. International Falls Public Library Board claims of ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. And International Falls Economic Development Authority claims of four hundred and seventy-one dollars even. For a total accounts payable of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty cents. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for payments and claims.
I'll make them.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we'll go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something to the attention of the council? I would just like to recognize we have Representative Rob Eklund with us tonight. Thank you for coming. Greatly appreciate it. Do you have anything to bring forward?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here to work with the talk reviews right now.
Well, we are moving, if we have no other audience, we're moving right down to new business and I'm moving that up to the front because there's some time restraints specifically on that one because I believe they're going to Rainier. So if you guys want to come right up and we'll handle the number three agenda item first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors for having us today. So we have Bruce Besty with us from the Crane Lake area. And you know, Representative Rob Eklund, my name's Tom Doherty, for those of you who don't know me. Um, I'll just give you a little bit of history of how I got involved with this and then I'll turn it over to Bruce. He tends to talk quite a bit. And he has a wealth of information, but uh, this all started for me with a conversation I had with Representative Eklund several years ago. I honestly can't even tell you how long it was. And Rob had this vision in his head that someday we are going to be able to ride a ATV side by side from here to Grand Marais. And of course, my ears perked up and I thought, boy, that sounds really cool. And we kicked it around up here with some other folks about forming our own ATV club up here in International Falls. And nobody really wanted to come forward and do that. You know, it takes a tremendous amount of effort. There's a lot involved. And as Bruce will allude to and talk about later, you'll just see how complex it is. So there was a group of us that some of the folks were members of the ATV club for many years, the Voyager Country ATV Club, and participated on some rides and some group gatherings and things like that. Then there was a group of five of us that started going to meetings and attending more of their events, asking questions and trying to get more involved. Kurt Kennedy is one of the members, Scott Bernie, Steve Riggs, Gene Wallander and myself. And I can't say enough about this club. They actually extended the opportunity, like the olive branch out to the folks up north and took five of us on as their, on, as directors in the club. They changed the bylaws. You know, it's very impressive what they've done so far. They have their signature bridge that was put across the Vermillion River that basically kind of link, but it links the east to the west. It was a one point one million dollar bridge. It's absolutely beautiful. But I can't say enough about them. And we're now working on this connection called the Koochin County Connection. And it's really the missing link when you put all of this together. And this will link northeastern Minnesota to western Minnesota, northwestern to the Bemidji Lakes, Brainerd Lakes area once it's all completed. And I can't stress just enough how important it is to make that connection. I saw it back in the uh, early nineteen nineties with the snowmobiles. When they were putting in the Burlington Northern Line was going to turn into the Blue Ox Snowmobile Trail. And we needed to have a connection and a crossing up north here. And the state actually couldn't get one. Uh, but the local club worked real hard and we got a crossing and it worked, was very beneficial to the communities. Once this connection is put in place, these folks that are riding up here, they're going to want access to essential services. Rooms, food and beverage, repairs, gas, shop in our stores. Just basically enjoy the area. We'll see, actually see loop travel. But with that, I'll turn it over to Bruce.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Bruce Besty. I'm Crane Lake, Minnesota. And in two thousand and fourteen, a gentleman named Stephen Cook from Melgeorges and I got together and had the vision of creating a ATV trail system, similar to a snowmobile trail between Bike and Crane Lake and Orr and Cam Five. And we had a meeting with Mr., our Representative Eklund here, and he said, like, really, Bruce? You gotta think we're going Grand Rapids to Virginia to International Falls, Ely to Silver Bay to Grand Marais. And we dialed in. Uh, we started our club in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, sixty-six people. We now have over nine hundred members in our club. And that's because people from the further outlying communities of Asher, Cabotogoma, International Falls, Eric'sburg, Ray, Little Fork, they've joined, Cook, Iron Range. And at that time, we didn't know that we were in the middle of a bigger connection. There was other efforts going on to create a system across this, across an arm part of the state. So, uh, yeah, we, we've had a couple of really good projects we put together. We built out our core area so that we could continue to go on. I'm not sure if everybody has this poster.
Okay.
But the poster, the blue stuff represents pretty much what we've got available right now, corridor routes and woods trails. The red is things that are funded currently, plus one other trail. We have seven projects that we're, we're working on right now for about two point six, two point seven million dollars, spent two and a half million over the last three years. And what we're proposing to the legislature this year, we're going to ask for support from you folks on, is that we're looking for one and three quarter million dollars to start what we call in the Kooch County Connection. With the idea that we need to get to Ray's Little Fork, Eric'sburg and International Falls. We are currently funded and have the A W and we're working on leases and permits right now to get to Cabotogoma Star. So this is going to be the next leg to get us all the way up in the, in the connection that, that we need to get up here. We're going to be looking for two things from you folks. One of them is that we're hoping that you'll endorse this project and you'll be meeting with your local representative to, uh, it's to help us pass this, uh, this, this bill that we're introducing. And that is going to be, there's actually two bills that we've introduced into legislature this year. One million dollars in Minnesota bonding. And hopefully the language will be written so that we can do probably a fifty percent match instead of a mac, a dollar for dollar match. And we're asking for five hundred thousand dollars from the dedicated account, which is user fees for ATVs registration and gas taxes. Other than, so we are going to be looking for support. You can meet with your representative and some of the others to help us get that bill passed. Uh, that bill has also got some other things in it, five hundred thousand dollars for the prospector, who we are connecting up with Prospector and Clyde Cities. Then the second thing we're going to be asking for is in February, we're making an application to the federal recreation trail program for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the idea that we need some other funds because things run higher than expected. Really from Cabotogoma to International Falls is what we're going to be using as, uh, as the definition of what we need those funds for. We're not going to get to the Falls of Little Fork for one and three quarter million, but we've got to get a good start. On the, on this legislation, we are looking for, to break it down, thirty-five thousand is for us to identify the alignments that are going to get us to these communities. Hundred and twenty-five thousand, I believe, is the number so we can conduct a phase two E A W. We've done our first phase, which is given us that opportunity to get up to Cab Store. And then the remainder of the money, we're going to want to put into construction. We think we have a pretty good alignment figured out up to Eric'sburg. And so that'll get us that good start. Been meeting with, uh, with Nathan Hyville at Kooch County and some of the other landowners. And so we're going to be looking for you to do. I'll turn it over to Representative Eklund.
Thanks, Bruce. Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council members. And these guys do the work. It, you know, it's amazing. When I first met Bruce, it was August of two thousand and fifteen. I remember clearly we were at Voyager for a little meet and greet when I was running for office and, uh, or September it was, not August. But Bruce came with his maps and his pens and he said, this is what we're going to do. And after about ten minutes, the other people said, Bruce, you can talk to him later. There's others that want to talk to him as well. But you know, that, as soon as I heard about this and that, and what, what they have going on over Ely with the Prospector's Trails Group, there's no reason why we can't connect International Falls, Grand Marais and International Falls, Bemidji. Right now, I believe there's three to one or so registrations, ATV side by side, registrations to snowmobile registrations in the state. We're going to have growing pains. We've experienced growing pains already because we have moved fast. But I liken it to the snowmobile trail plan that Mr. Doherty spoke about in his testimony. So I, I think it's a good thing for, uh, for our economy, a good thing for northern Minnesota. So I hope the city council can get on board in this. And the only reason I'm here is these guys bring me the ideas and I get the legislation written, hopefully passed. And we've, we've been pretty successful over the last few years in funding a lot of these projects. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and members.
Thank you. If anyone have any questions? Well, at that point, I would entertain, do you, are you asking for two letters of support then? One, one for state legislature and one for the federal application?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I believe that we're looking for a letter. If he thinks that's going to help with the legislation, that was a purpose, we just wanted you to have a supportive, make sure you're talking to guys like this. So if you could put together a resolution, a letter, that would be helpful. We can include it with the legislation, set it down with our lobbyists. And we've also been endorsed by ATV Minnesota, which is the state organization for this funding. The second one would be, we are making that application in February and they're going to want some community support letters. That's why we've come to you tonight and we want to do the same thing with Rainier and Little Fork and make sure that they're C. One thing I forgot to mention is a couple of years ago, we did apply for an RTP grant, hundred fifty thousand. We built a wood bridge on what we call the Vermillion Falls Trail. And about a month and a half ago, we won a national award, American Trails Award, thirteen awards were given out for trails, not just ATV trails across the United States. And we won one of those anytime you're recognized nationally. That's pretty cool. For our steel bridge, we actually won two national awards from the U S Forest Service, thirteen district or eastern district, northeast district. Thirteen states from Maine to Missouri to Minnesota, seven awards were given out. I'm sorry, six awards were given out. We were able to win one of them. One of the other awards had an honorable mention and we got that one also. So it's, it's really great to get that kind of attention from national recognition and we need you guys help us get another one to Falls.
Any other, any questions? Hearing none, I would ask if we could write a letter of support and just commit that we'll talk to our legislators about this project. We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? I just got to say thank you, guys. I, I, I'm not an avid outdoorsman. Everyone here knows that. But I understand how incredibly important it is to our area from the fishing, the, the snowmobiles, ATV trails. All of that brings people to our area and people to our area is really what's going to make us grow right now. So I really commend you guys for the hard work. And I know Mr. Doherty's been doing it forever. It sounds like you've been involved in it. We all know how much Rob is, uh, is active in his outdoor stuff. So I appreciate guys like you bringing these things forward so we can get people to our area. So without any other questions, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and members.
All right, we'll go back to item number one on the agenda, some public information on the deer feeding ban. DNR Conservation Officer Darren Kittleson. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, uh, nice to be here. Mrs. Berkstrom asked me to come to speak to you about the new, um, beating or feeding ban that we have within Koochin County. And if there's any, I can kind of relate some of the information in regards to the actual statute that's out there regarding mentioning Koochin County and the feeding ban. It's in regards to chronic wasting disease. It's been ongoing throughout the state for many, many years now, and the state's trying to get a handle on it. And I think it was just a matter of time before we came up further north. And this recent emergency rule that was put in place to involve Koochin County involved from a captive herd in Beltrami County. And that's, they just wanted to extend it out to some of the adjacent counties. And there's also been detection in Polk County, which is over west in near Grand Forks area there in, in the wild deer. So it is creeping around and stuff like that. So the state has imposed a feeding ban in Koochin County. And it's basically, it's, it's, um, and I'm, I'll just kind of briefly buzz through the, the actual emergency rule. And it's six, two, three, two, forty-eight hundred. It's feeding deer prohibited in certain counties. So we start out with some definitions and the first one is attractants, which means, because there is some counties that not only talk about feeding, normally what most people would consider food and stuff, but we also talk about attractants too, scents and stuff like that. Urine and different things that people might use for hunting and stuff. So there's some counties that there is a ban on that also. Along with the feeding portion. So attractants are considered liquid food scents, salt, minerals, and other natural and manufactured products that are capable of attracting enticing deer, including any product that contains or perpetuates or purports and contains served urine, blood, gland oil, feces and other bodily fluid. Um, that's the definition of attractants. And another definition is feed, which is basically affecting Kooch County at this time. This ban, and to back up a little bit, the ban went into effect in the end of December, uh, December thirty, thirtieth of this year or of twenty-one. Uh, feed means grains, fruits, vegetables, nuts, hay, or other food that is capable of attracting or enticing deer. So pretty, pretty simple and straightforward in regards to that. So it, uh, there's also another definition because it talks about placing it, includes to place, cause to place, distribute or otherwise put on a person's property in an outdoor location accessible to deer or allow another person to do so. So, um, and then it goes on to talk about the different counties that are affected. In regards to it, Koochin County is in sub B of this part, which is basically a person may not place, feed, except as provided in sub part three. So it doesn't, Kooch County doesn't include the attractant's part of it, just the feed. So now the exceptions to this are in sub part three, which is intended to feed wildlife other than deer. If feed is arranged to exclude access to deer or put at least six feet above the ground. So basically people that I would consider maybe in the City of International Falls that are feeding birds or squirrels or anything that they need to do their due diligence to place them where deer can't get to them. And or if there's a normal agricultural practice or people that own some farms and stuff like that, if they have hay that are for their cattle and stuff like that, but they, or forest management or food planting practices. It also states that livestock for the purpose of feed is domestic livestock that are present actively consuming and feeding daily. We also ask those people to cover and deter deer, deter the deer from accessing their hay stacks and stuff like that. Also, in regards to this, a person can be found guilty of this. It's a violation. It's a misdemeanor. Once if they do, are in violation of this, they could receive a citation and then they're also asked to clean it up. So that's kind of basically the cut and dry of the feeding ban in Kooch County as it is. So now I would anticipate as things progress over the next few years, I imagine this is going to stay in place. I don't expect it to be, you know, taken down anytime soon. I probably expect it to continue and maybe even go to the attractant's part of it statewide. So, but that's not at that point. So I just encourage, right now, it's kind of an educational thing that we would encourage people, the city, the citizens of International Falls and the county to do their due diligence. And we're out there to educate people. And so that's kind of why I'm here. If you have any questions or the citizens of the International Falls have any questions to this. But it's something to consider. It's seriousness. Even though we think that maybe we're helping the deer by feeding them, we're actually not. And we're causing deer to, you know, group up and, and eat out of a pile. And it's, 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 it's kind of, I tell people when we feed deer, it's, it's no different than us humans. Where do we go to get our food? It's a grocery store. And we're all there. And, you know, I can even relate it to the COVID that we have going on in the country right now. You know, how diseases are transmitted and it's no different with wild animals. And so I would encourage people to do their due diligence, follow the, the state statutes so we can kind of slow the progression of this disease. Because it is something that's, uh, you know, I think as far as, you know, our, uh, being up in the north here and stuff like that, I think it's a huge part of everybody's life, you know, especially in the fall of the year. And so we don't want to be where we're having to bring deer or that be concerned as far as the transmission to humans and having to bring in our deer that are harvested and have them tested and all that, which is occurring around the state, but just not up here at this time. So. I can say that we're not out there actively booking in backyards and making sure, but you know, just an educational thing that everybody kind of follows this rules and we want to have everybody comply. And basically that's what we're there for is to, you know, hopefully it protects our deer herd throughout the state of Minnesota and everybody needs to do their part. So.
Any questions, please?
In a nutshell, what is the ruling on bird feeders?
So, so basically the, in a nutshell is right now, if, as long as they're six feet above the ground and you can deter deer from getting at them, they're perfectly fine, along with squirrels or anything else. But if you're not doing that, then in turn, you know, that would be a violation of the emergency rule. Yep.
Any other questions?
Well, I'd like to talk to you about the scent thing. I'm glad you came tonight because I've been asked that question a number of times in the coffee shop by a lot of hunters and stuff. And I couldn't give them an answer. I, I wasn't sure about Kooch County. I knew down in the middle of the state that they eliminated stuff like that, but right now we're okay.
Right.
Okay. I'm glad you came.
And this is, you know, um, and this is all year long. It's three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It's not just the ten days prior to hunting and hunting over bait. It's totally different than that. This is a complete ban on feeding wildlife or deer in fact. So.
One more question. And feed plots out in the, on your property are fine then?
Yep. Yep. They're perfectly fine. It's kind of more of a natural, you know, we, you know, I get the question all the time. Is it okay if I got private land out in, you know, in the county somewhere and can I grow pumpkins in the middle of the woods? Yes, you can. Okay. Um, by right now, that's, that's completely legal. So.
Any other questions, please?
Out of curiosity, so if you get, if you get caught feeding deer in town at this time, does it affect your hunting privileges at all? Or is there, is there talk, can it?
Um, no, not at this particular time. This violation wouldn't affect their hunting privileges. No. But it would be a, you know,
I don't, I don't feed deer in town.
It could, I mean, if there's, there is, you know,
violations that can.
Yep, there is that specifically one violation could affect their hunting privileges. If they are found guilty of two violations within three years, then yes, it could affect their, their privileges. So it's just something considering. You know, we're just asking people to do their due diligence. I know it's not the easiest and our community, the elderly people at nursing homes and stuff like that. You know, they like to watch the squirrels, the, the birds and like to watch the deer come in. And along with that, you know, we know that, and I know it's been discussed here at city council in regards to a potential hunting within the city limits. And at this point, my personal opinion is, is no. I know there's other cities throughout the state that do it and there's a caveat of things that they require people to do. So this is, you know, part of, you know, asking citizens to do their part in turn. So maybe we can get these deer to go back to their natural habitat and that's out in the woods, not in the, in someone's backyard.
And that's, that's exactly the question that I was kind of alluding to because we, we have decided that it doesn't make sense to have a deer hunt in, in the city limits. There's no public lands large enough to make that okay. So the, the second question is, we have a lot of deer in the community. I mean, I can, I can drive past seven down Eighth Street on my way to work in the morning. So do we have that many more deer in the city limits of International Falls compared to other rural cities?
Um, I don't think compare, I mean, I, I can't specifically speak in regards to that, but I would say no, where I don't think we're any different. I think what it is, is that, um, we're, we've, people enjoy watching wildlife. And it's, I mean, I know people that spend hundreds and tens of thousands of dollars to feed deer at, in the winter time. They do not need it. You talk to any wildlife biologist, they're saying they're probably more detrimental to them than anything with the disease that can be transmitted, not just chronic wasting disease, but other diseases. And it's, so it's And um, it's so it's seriousness, normal. Times, the stomach enzymes of the deer switch over and that's where their. Their acids and their things are able to break down the buds that they would normally be browsing on this time of the year. Not corn, not sunflowers, all that stuff, so it can affect them. And then the fact that, you know, we are seeing more deer. Um, you know, the the herd is is growing at times and I think we're getting deer that are. Um, having their young within the city limits. And this is their home now. This is their, they have areas that they go and they, you know, winter in and it's very close here. We are. You know, not too far away, the cemetery, for example, is a prime example of, you know, there's some. Pretty nice uh country over there as far as winter habitat and 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 summer habitat out there. And like I told you earlier, it's it's, we all go to the grocery store to get our groceries to eat. And essentially, that's what deer do. It's it's, it's. If we had to walk around, I tell people this, I said, if we had to walk around town to feed ourselves. You know, it'd be very difficult and the the deer do the same thing. It's easy to go to that pile. Instead of walking through the woods for miles and miles to get their stomachs full when they can go to one place and get their stomachs full. Which in lies the problem of everything. And we talk about. Deer being hit by cars, you know, insurance rates going up and stuff like that and and that's the whole, you can keep going on and on in regards to this and what effect it can have, so.
Any other questions?
I didn't know how Santa could deliver his presents this year because New Year's Eve. My granddaughter was just walking out the door and there were eight whitetails going across the. By the school there and into the woods and just like all eight in a row, so it's like. Let me get his presents done. He's a reindeer.
On New Year's Eve?
And we're seeing more wildlife. I mean, there's, I live just over on Home Lane here. I've seen a wolf go through my yard. As the the famous coyotes that we've had over on Keenan Drive, I've seen him on Home Lane. Um, so we're 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 gonna see, you know, it's just that human and wildlife interaction here combined. Yep. You name it. We do live in northern Minnesota, so there's going to be more of that interaction with humans, so.
Well, I appreciate your comment. Thank you. All right, next we'll go to item number two, consider a commercial loan program renewal for citizens for Bacchus. Christine La- Lassala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, for having us tonight. Our purpose here tonight is to request the continued participation from the city. In a city participation loan for the citizens of Bacchus A B. I do believe you have the letter in your packet. That was provided to Mrs. Bergstrom. This loan was originated in two thousand nine, subsequently renewed in two thousand fourteen at a rate of three percent for seven years. It has come to mature again. There is a balloon payment on it. The outstanding balance is seventeen thousand, seven oh four, forty-six. And we are requesting another seven-year renewal at three percent.
Any questions? Just out of curiosity, uh, city administrator, is it common to um, do these three times? We issued it the second time once.
We we have not done a three-time um renewal. This is the first time of being asked. But as per the resolution in which this commercial loan program falls under. Which is in your packet and I believe it's eighteen dash thirteen, it does say that, you know, upon um. Extenuating circumstances, you could approve it for an additional seven years. And that is why it is before you this evening.
We would like to. You know, argue that COVID has had a negative impact. Yes, yes. And Lois can and Wad can talk more to that, but it's had a negative impact on on Bacchus and the. The um functions that they can have.
Mayor and council, Bacchus works very diligently and very hard to maintain our our budget and to. Um, work to have Bacchus be more financially stable and we are on a very good path. But we would like to ask for your assistance with this renewal on this loan, please.
And these, these loans are a, uh, they're, it's a thirty-year loan with a standard seven-year balloon. So we're just seven years are up. So it's just like a uh, like a home mortgage can have a five or a seven-year. Balloon payment, you just have to refinance it. So they're just in the refinance stage. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty standard practice.
That's exactly right. It does have a small.
Have a problem with that. You you would, most mortgages nowadays, you would, what is usually five years, seven years, whatever. Then you just have to refinance and and get it figured out and hopefully lower your rate. So, yeah, I, not that that's happening here, but. Yeah, I I would have no problem with this.
I would be in agreement. Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to uh, to extend the commercial loan program.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. We have a second by Counselor Holden. He got all the way through it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question. Oh, but yes, motion carries. Five for the motion, zero against. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
All right, we'll move down to number four since we've already handled number three. Uh, the mayor proclamation declaring January thirtieth through February fifth, twenty twenty-two. As Catholic Schools Week at Saint Thomas Aquinas School. Chair would entertain a motion to uh. Move on the proclamation.
I'll make that.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second? We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question. I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to a design phase proposal from Bolton and Mink for the rehabilitation project for the lift station number seven. Somewhat of an inside joke. I'm very happy to see that we got this uh on a snow day. Um, chair would entertain, chair would entertain a motion uh to um. Accept the proposal.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Kraus. Now, I I'm correct in this is the lift station number seven that is uh over by McDonald's area. And uh, this is just a rehab of it. It it needs some work. There's some funds that are coming out of uh, of. The American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, this was discussed at the Public Works meeting. Do you have anything to add to it?
No, unless you do, Ted.
See, I was going on my way, not to call.
We had to call him when he came.
Lift station number seven.
Station number seven, we changed its name?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right.
This is a McDonald's lift station?
Yes, it's a corner of Third Avenue and Seventeenth Street.
Okay, so it's the uh well, the wet well and the pumps is what you're talking?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're actually looking at. The issue we have during a major rain event, which we've had for. Thirty-five years is um, in some instances, we've had to pump it because it can't keep up. So what we're looking to do is increase the output of it to take care of that issue.
And what are you doing to do that? Bigger pumps or?
That's what we're working on the design side of it. Is right now we've got a twenty-horse and two fives. Um, the twenty-horse, we can put out six hundred gallons per minute. When we put the twenty-horse and the two fives, we get six hundred and five gallons per minute. What we'd like to do is do nine hundred to eleven hundred gallons per minute. And still keep the efficiency of the the lift station. So the struggle with the lift station is the lift station is designed to run. All the way on, all the way off for a major rain event, which you have three or four times a year. So to try and find that efficiency where it may only run an hour a day, three hundred and sixty days out of the year. So you, you don't want to. Put it out, you you don't want to putting out. You don't want to put in three twenty-horse in there just to blast it just for three or four days, five days, so.
Is a control panel gonna be changed at all? That's pretty new.
The the control panels, no, it all depends on how the design works out to see how it would be reconfigured. So the one thing we do have is we've got two. New five horsepower pumps that have integral VFDs in them. And it was part of a program with Minnesota Power. They wanted to track the energy usage. So they actually paid for the price over and above what a standard pump was and tracked the energy use for a year. To see how much energy efficiency they could get out of them. But the goal always was that if we upgrade this lift station, we could take those two five horsepower pumps. And put them in another lift station. Because we've got a lot more five horsepower pumps out there than any other pump.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and second. Does anyone have any other questions regarding the um lift station number seven? Hearing no other questions, I'll call the question.
Hi, hi.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next, we have on the agenda uh approval request to order two Ford Police Utility SUV patrol vehicles from. Tenebor? Teneboard Ford Incorporated under the state bid pricing uh as budgeted in capital outlay. Four zero two dot one, four one one, zero zero dot five eight zero zero. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those uh vehicles.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Hi, hi. Hi.
Hi. Well, yes, motion carries five zero. Just as a follow-up on that. I don't, I truly don't care, but I'm just wondering, what is the paint coloring? Is it going to be white on white, black on black? This is totally your decision. I don't care one way or another. I just know we're going to get questions. Yeah, and and big picture, I I I'm not a micromanager. I want you to run your department your way. I just know I'm going to get questions. I just need to know the answer. I guarantee that. All right, uh, move to uh consider appointment to the Forest Hill Cemetery Board. Uh, if you remember last uh meeting, there was um some discussion on what I could and could not appoint. We did get an updated. Bylaws of the Forest Hill Cemetery Association. I reached out to uh Ward Merrill. He had showed interest in. Uh, being on the cemetery board. So um, I would like to uh due to a request to no longer be on those boards. Replace Counselor Buller and replace Counselor Kraus with Ward Merrill and myself. So the chair would entertain a motion to uh make those appointments to the Forest Hill Cemetery Association.
So moved.
We have a motion by, of course, it was one of you two, by Counselor Kraus. And we have a second from uh Counselor Buller. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, please. I I just want to note that uh I I very much enjoyed my time on the cemetery board, but I just feel that it's it's time for a change. That I I feel that I've done everything I can do on that board and it's time for, it's time for somebody else. To uh to sit on that commission, so.
Fair enough.
And for the record too, I feel the same way. We we got the roads fixed, we got the signs up. I I'm not opposed to helping out there yet to, because there's a lot of things that we got going on right now that that. We're going to have to have a meeting this month yet and with the new members and try to re- repl- I was president for four years now, so. Just to re- uh restructure and and discuss the issues that we have on there right now, so. I'm going to try to call for a meeting towards the end of this month yet, so.
I uh, you know what, if if one of you two could just give a a outline of why we had put two city counselors on there and. Number number one, I I'll be the first to admit of all of the boards and commissions that uh that this this uh body ends up appointing people to. I would guess the hardest stress level would have to be literally the cemetery board and the rec commission. Because both of them, you're dealing with loved ones, one is dealing with kids, one is dealing with family members. And there's a lot of passion when it comes down to it. So uh, with that being said, what were the challenges when you guys went on to that board and. What have you guys done in the timeframe that you've been on there to make it better?
I I think initially, um, this placement actually happened prior to Counselor Buller. I was sitting on the board. This was. Prior to the election when I was actually appointed to the city council before I was actually elected to it. The the council, the uh. Cemetery was in a, in a bad spot financially and and having a rough go and the. The the previous board was doing the the absolute best they could and I I don't want to say anything about that. The board was doing. What they could do, but they were all, they had all been on for a very long time and they were in a position where they were pretty much ready to to move on. And um. The city council was very split on whether or not we should fund the cemetery. The cemetery can, is a very controversial subject. Because the truth of the matter is the cemetery is not in the city. The actual portion of the cemetery that you are sitting on the board for sits in the county. It does not, none of it sits in the city. The the Forest Hill Cemetery is not in the city of International Falls. But, okay, but when we, when I was first placed on that board, we did not own the Legion portion, so the, that that was, that came as I was on the board. So when I was placed on that board and that was the argument in the budget cycle, this would have been for the twenty nineteen budget. So this was in the fall of twenty eighteen. We were having this discussion. Forest Hill Cemetery is not that owned portion, is not in the city of International Falls. Yet the city was contributing ten thousand dollars a year. So we were, we were having a discussion about should we, shouldn't we? Um, Mayor Anderson was was arguing that it is a, it is a vital service. And if it was to go defunct, where would it end up? Would it go to the county? Would it go to the city? Obviously, we'd go to the county because it's in the county, but then. Where does it go? So he thought, you know, we continue to give, to give this money, but we really don't know what's going on. So let's put some counselors on there and let's see what's going on. So um, I got, I got placed. Then in the organization meeting, then in um, the in January of twenty nineteen, I was placed along with Counselor Buller. And got an opportunity to get on that board and. Kind of got a look and and see what was going on. And then that's kind of where we started um. For me personally, where where I went is, you guys all know I'm I'm a financial guy. So I got a look at uh the perpetuity fund and saw that they were making about nine dollars a year. On their perpetuity fund. Basically, it was sitting in a regular bank account. It was making simple interest. There was thirty some odd thousand dollars and they were making nine dollars a year in simple interest. So we were able to work with Bremer Bank and Raymond James. And I think, what did we make? What did we make last year? I think through, it was, it was around, it was almost five figures. Yeah, we made, anyway, we were able to make substantially more than nine dollars and get the perpetuity fund, which. Which they can then turn around and you can use that for lawnmower gas, you can buy new lawnmowers, fix up this, that and the other. Um, can't use it for salaries, but you can use it for upkeep in the cemetery. So it it, we really got to a point where the cemetery was getting closer to being self-sufficient. Um, and then just made some changes on the on the board and and how kind of how we're running things and all what Counselor Buller talked about, what he was able to get done.
Well, I think um, I was already on the board when I was appointed to because I was elected on the. From the earlier board, I was elected to be on that board, so I was already on when when I was appointed to represent the city. And I guess my goals were to try to get the the culverts that were all humped up, get those replaced. Um, we got some signage out there to, the signs of lots that tells you where the blocks are and and it's easier to. Take care of that. Uh, recently, we had uh, like I Murray surveying to come help us out. And put in like fifty new pins in in block one, two, three and four. And so uh, we got easier to. Measure off of to find your lot that you're trying to sell or that where the, where your loved ones at. And also then we we did uh, we put laugh in each one of those for the winter so that they know where they're at. And also then we we did, we put laugh in each one of those for the winter so that they know where they're at. Needless to say, I didn't think about this, but the snowplower loves them. Go right in between those laughing, knows where that road is, so that worked out really good. And I got a metal detector to find them in the summertime. Now we're working on a, with Ward, we're working on a tree project, trying to get some trees put in and make it Forest Hill again instead of Bear Hill. So it's kind of, it's it's moving forward really good, you know, and I I think it's 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 a tribute to the the board we have that they're to work with and and we are looking for somebody to mow this next spring because our our mower, Dave Manasa decided he was gonna retire, retire. And so we're looking for somebody to to run the mower for us or or we have to contract or something. So I mean, we we've moved forward a lot and and I think we've done, the the board has done some really good things out there. Excellent.
What what are the challenges moving forward?
Challenges moving forward, as I see, I've had some questions and and of I'd like to see some fundraising started. Because people want to go out there in the wintertime and see their loved one. Well, we don't plow the roads in the wintertime. We don't have the funds to plow the roads, so we don't plow the roads. Well, if we had like a fundraiser where people would want to donate to, we could use those monies to to plow. And then when when there's a funeral right now, the family pays for the plowing for the funeral. So and we only plow in to that spot and back out and around, so. I can see that would be a benefit for people to be able to go out in the wintertime and and see their their loved one in their grave, so. I'd like to see that. And I think Ward on this tree program too, if we get somebody that really has some knowledge on on trees and and could look at our, what we're could plant trees. And then get like maybe a five year program of tree planting, maybe maybe ten, maybe twenty, maybe thirty trees a year, whatever we can get funding for. Or if somebody wants to donate a tree for because their loved ones out there, you say, I'll I'll buy a tree and then you guys plant it where you want it, you know. And put a name on it if you want to. You can bring a little plaque and put the plaque there in memory of or whatever, I think. I think that would help a lot moving forward. That would be a couple of challenges that would be something that we could look at.
Well, fantastic. Thank you guys for for serving and I guess I'm I don't know if I, oh, we do have a motion and a second. I would call the, do we have a motion and a second? Okay. So.
Yeah, we do.
That's, I thought we, I thought we.
I second.
That's what I thought too. So we have a motion and a second for the appointment of myself and Ward Merrill. I'll call the question.
Hi.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you again, guys, because I I do know that you guys did a lot of work over the last three years, three, three plus years for both you guys, so thank you. Next, consider reinstating the Human Resources Committee. A little background information on this one. At the last meeting of twenty twenty one, when we moved forward with our our meeting schedule, because of having an HR director, we have taken away the Human Resource Resources Committee. The Human Resources Committee did have one more meeting in twenty twenty one after that organ or not organizational meeting, after the meeting that we set our meeting dates for twenty twenty two. They had a recommendation to reinstate the Human Resources Committee. At our last meeting, our first meeting, our organizational meeting of twenty twenty two, I had made a motion to appoint a member, two members to that committee and it failed. With that being said, just due to the nature of it, we have to reinstate the Human Resources Committee if I'm to appoint anybody. So the chair would entertain a motion to reinstate the Human Resources Committee.
So moved.
We have a motion by councillor Deech.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Holden. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I remember correctly, I mean, the whole reason that we had eliminated the Human Resources Committee is because we've hired an individual to we hired a human resources person. So what is the, what's the rationale of having the committee?
Please. Okay, human resource is basically for the employer. It's for our city council or any organization that hires a human resource person. It does not necessarily look for the benefit of the workers. And I I feel if we have this committee and I'm on the committee or whoever it may be, it doesn't have to be myself. Somebody would be there looking for the workers, looking out for the workers. It's pretty hard for a human resource person to go against their employer. And and that's the reason that I think we need this committee, just to help protect the workers.
And I agree.
Somebody else is a buffer.
Yeah. I agree. They got some place to come to. If they not getting any answers or whatever, they can come to the Human Resource Committee. And then whoever's on there can take it up and.
Playing devil's advocate on that though, and ju- just the the question, isn't that what we have a union and union stewards for?
Well, stewards are there to represent the employees too. But that's usually at the bargaining table and also when there's whether discipline, action or whatever. Union steward is required to, through the union to represent that person that maybe is going underneath discipline. But the idea is if they're sitting listening and stuff and you can if with a human resource committee, you can shut down a lot of grievances and stuff before it gets to be to a point of being nasty. So that that's that's the reason. They got somebody to represent them if they're not getting any answers, so.
Any other discussion?
Okay, please. I I'm just, I'm still trying to figure that so that so in lieu of a grievance, they would come to the, I'm still trying to figure that out, like so a a union employee would come to the Human Resources Committee before a grievance, during a grievance?
Well, maybe maybe before it to diffuse before it it has to move on to that
Right.
that level. It's just another person to bounce his idea off of.
Right. In fact, the steward could come to the Human Resources Committee to visit with them on diffusing a certain situation. And I also feel that the Human Resource Committee, they've got somebody to come to where it keeps the morale up. If they don't think they have anybody that's gonna be able to sit down with them and stuff, the morale can tip. And for me, it's real important. City employees are, they're all in front of everybody every day. They're a great bunch of people. They work hard and you deserve to have good morale, so that's why I'm back in the Human Resource Committee.
And and that's been the historic use of the committee is that people have come to the committee
Yes.
prior to.
Yeah. Maybe they don't, let's say they don't agree with whatever's happening. And so they come to the Human Resource Committee just to get some answers. They got some place to go. Otherwise, it's just rumored out there and can get pretty.
Please.
I guess just if I may, mayor and councillors, the they have a, there's a process in which if an employee has an issue, there is a process to take. There's a process that they need to talk to their direct supervisor. If they don't get an answer there, they have their union, they have their union steward. You know, if they don't get an answer there, our Human Resources Director is is, she has this line that she has to walk, she being the employee. That she understands what she has to do as the as an employee. That's her job is to is to help that employee go the right place and get the answers needed. And she also has to look out for the city as a whole. But for you to say they have nowhere to go, I I guess if if she believes that it hasn't been, that they haven't been answered or helped out, it should come to the committee as a whole. I've always wondered why we've had two laypeople on an HR committee. The committee of the whole needs to be informed. You need, when the last individuals that spoke to you guys, they emailed everybody. They didn't come to you directly. They emailed everybody on the council. So that's how they're reaching out because that's what they know. Anybody can come and talk to any of the individuals. I mean, any employee can go talk to councillors if they have an issue. However, there's a chain in which they should be progressing through if it's it's if it's a serious enough issue. And and that's what the organizational structure is. And if they go to HR, that HR person can, director can bring it to the committee of the whole. Then the committee as a whole, it understands the situation and the issue at hand.
What if that isn't working out though? Let's say it just isn't working out and it's gone that road. And the Human Resource Committee can take a look at it too and try to mend the bridge. You know as well as I do, there's a lot of employees and a lot of personalities, a lot of different. And and this is a good bunch of people. And so I think my own feelings is I think it's important to have a Human Resource Committee. Might be the last action there to help somebody. So that's what I'm talking about.
Councillor Bowler, you have something to add?
Did you? Just exactly what Betty said. There's a protocol on what they can, where they should go step by step by step, and that's already in place. And according to this year, the the last step they would bring it to, and she would bring it to the committee of the whole, so.
And and where?
Human Resource Committee then, committee of the whole. That's what you want.
And that that's what my, that's what our thought was when we got rid of the the HR committee was so that anything that comes from the HR director would come to the committee as a whole so that we could have that discussion. In the event that we have to go into a closed session at that point to discuss the nature of a specific employee's situation, that would be brought from the HR director. Where I have a little bit of concern with this is we're in twenty twenty two. There are lawsuits everywhere and we but we get confidential information and that HR committee in the time that I've been on city council has gotten confidential information that I absolutely know is difficult to hold in. And if we have, we are all liable for the city. If we were to say something that came out from information that we receive, that's a problem. But if we have an HR person that is is vetting that information so that we're getting only what we need to make the correct, not the correct decision, an educated decision on employee matters, that makes sense to me. On the on the flip side, this is no disrespect to any of our employees. This is human nature. When employees or anybody in our community comes to us as elected officials, we're hearing one side of the story. And once we hear that one side of the story, we become passionate and we start moving on it. We go in to speak with the city administrator, the HR director, the public works director, whatever the situation is, we go in to have that conversation. And we start hearing the whole other side of the story. I think it makes the most sense that if we have an issue that comes to us, we go to the HR person and if they're, if they say that it's being handled, we don't need any more information unless it has to come to the committee as the whole. Because none of us as individuals should be knowing anything about our employees other than what's coming from both the employee and the HR. So we know what the law is, we know what has happened and we know what our options are. But us just hearing it from one person, which is the person that is being directly affected, does not seem to be the right way to move forward when dealing with personnel.
Thing is, when you got a Human Resource Committee, you can listen to not only the Human Resource Director, but you can listen to an individual that comes in that maybe isn't satisfied with what's happened. And so now that person sits there at the table and the Human Resource Director is there too. And what can be shared, what's legal to be shared can be shared. And then from there, even and at that time, if you want to have the city attorney there to make sure, you can.
With it. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's just a, I think it just makes the employees feel good to know somebody is there in case somebody, you know, maybe they're not happy with what what's happened or, you know, so.
But with that being said, don't you think it makes sense for the whole city council to sit in on that conversation if we're having a discussion?
That's fine, except I think if you have the right people on the Human Resource Committee, you can, you can diffuse a lot of stuff where it doesn't even have to go there.
Fair enough. Councillor Deech.
Speaking of confidentiality, I've been on this committee two, three years. And there's several issues that are ongoing right now that I know nothing about. And I don't need to know about it. But there's other issues where, for example, this last one that came up where somebody says, hey, I've talked to people, I'm not getting anywhere. This is what I need. I brought it forward. It came forward. We discussed it. There was another side of the story that I didn't know about. But this is what it's for. She had somebody to come to. And this is what we need.
With that specific situation though, she has had gotten that information from other members of the council as well, including the HR director and the this, the city administrator. And the reason that that we kept going, kept going around is because they didn't like the information, hoping we could get to a person that didn't know the information. And that's why I think we need to come to a full group where we can have a discussion. So not just you knows the information, not just I know the information, but the council knows the information when we're dealing with HR issues. And that that's my, that's my thoughts.
Great. And this information was shared with the council. Because I asked her to share it. Because when it originally started, the council didn't know anything about it. I asked her to share it.
There you go. It was asked by the chairman of the Human Resources Committee.
If I may, that that particular case had been brought up previously in the HR committee. And that individual did not like that answer that came out of the HR committee, so that individual further wrote and then wrote everybody in on that. The HR committee had already addressed that issue at one time. But that individual did not like the answer and therefore it went back to you guys along then with everybody else. So it's not a really good example because the individual didn't like what they heard, no matter where they went and.
Well, as I said, more came out later that I did not know. But yet she had somebody to come to at that time that said, hey, I'm not happy here. What's happening?
Fair enough. Please.
Mr. Mayor, and I I believe that that's, I guess devil's advocate, I believe that's the role of the councillor or it can be. I think we've all had an employee come to us. I mean, I wasn't on the council five minutes and I had an employee like have like get ahold of me and say, hey, we need to, we need to sit down and I need to talk about an issue that we're having. And I had an employee, what, like four or five weeks ago, have an issue that we were able to resolve through Human Resources. It it went the right way. It didn't, I didn't meddle. It didn't go the way that maybe they thought it was gonna go, but it went the way it was supposed to go. Because it went to, it went to Human Resources like it was supposed to. And a formal complaint was filed and it or not human, it went to the Human Resources person and it went, it it went the right, it went the way it was supposed to go. And I just feel like, I I feel like in a previous instance where we were supposed to vote on something, I felt very I felt like I didn't really even know what was going on. Quite frankly, we had an an issue last year that I felt like I had no idea what was going on. Just out of the loop. So I I don't know. I, as much as I agree with that, I think as an, I think as a city councillor, I think we can, we can take calls from we can take calls from employees, we can take calls from constituents, we can take calls from each other. We can, I I mean, it's just, it's just how it goes and and we do and and we do. So I I don't know. I don't know. I just, I, yeah, I don't know. I just like, I would like to see it, all of us. If we're gonna have a, if it's gonna be a HR issue, I'd like everybody at the table if they're gonna come talk to us because if we have to vote on it again, that that issue that we had last year, I felt I had no idea what was going on. I had no idea what I was voting on. It was way out of the loop.
Well, you know, I I got so much respect for city employees, not just because I worked here for forty years, but I just do because I know what they gotta go through. And they're out in front of the public every day. The morale is so important. And when you know that, that if something's festering and they got nobody, they're not maybe they've tried the route that you're talking about, which, okay, that's fine. But then nobody's there to represent them, maybe. But then nobody's there to uh represent them maybe in a different way, you know what I mean? To settle things down. It's one of the reasons I ran for counselor was uh city employees were important to me. And I don't know. I I just, that's in my heart, so.
However, I vote on this, doesn't mean I don't respect city employees.
Well, I understand that, Walt. But do you, I want to ask you a question. Do you believe the morale is really good on the city force right now?
I think it's a lot better than it was before.
Okay, and what could be some improvements?
There always can be improvements.
Right.
No matter where you're at.
Right.
There always can be improvements.
And and that's what I'm working to do. And one of the ways is right there, right at that table right there. Human resources. With the Human Resource Director. And if it needs me, with the city attorney. If somebody's worried about liability or whatever, have the city attorney there. Right now, a lot of stuff goes south. It goes to labor attorney down in the Twin Cities, and it's not being handled here locally. So that's something I know about.
Any other discussion on reinstating the Human Resources Committee? All right, we have a motion on the floor to reinstate the Human Resource Committee. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
No, no.
I'll vote no. Motion carrier fails on a three to two vote. Next, approve the revised resolution number five dash twenty twenty two to approve the International Voyagers Snowmobile Club Gambling Premises Permit, Application for Lawful Gambling at TRM Five Incorporated, Doing Business at Sammy's Pizza at three oh one third street or third avenue, International Falls. Uh, city administrator, why are we updating this?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. The the state of Minnesota has asked us to amend and revise the application or the resolution, excuse me, to just state lawful gambling, not to indicate what specific activities they are doing, as that is actually taken care of on the attached um LG two fifteen lease for lawful gambling activity report. And if they choose to change activities from time to time, it's harder if we have ours specific to an activity. So the state has asked us to make that as just approve a lawful gambling along with the applications attached. So that's what the state has asked us to do. And in talking with the league and other cities, you can do it both ways. You can create a new resolution, you can revise the resolution. And just in talking, I know I chatted with Emma a little bit about it as well, just for ease and purposes of tracking things, we are going to leave oh five and then do a revised oh five in our system so we know what happened there to be able to track that and not lose sight of that.
Okay.
If if so approved by
Okay.
the board.
So the chair would entertain a motion to uh approve the revised resolution for the gambling premise permit for Sammy's Pizza. I have a motion by Counselor Buller.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to the reports of the administrator, attorney, and the department heads. City administrator.
Uh, just a couple of items, mayor and council. We are continuing moving forward with the union negotiations and working on a few other projects, including Kerry Park, Green Tech, Ambulance Taxi District, continuing to move all of those items forward.
Thank you.
Betty, um, is that something you can share with us? Uh, you said you're going through the negotiations. How's that going?
We we're still working with them. We're still in the process. We have not come to an agreement on anything yet at such time that I can bring that, we will do that. And then it would have to be in closed session.
All three unions?
No.
Just one.
We're working with a couple of the unions. Well, we're working with both unions, but not everything yet.
Three of them.
There's two, two union groups.
There's the police and fire.
Right, under two unions. Yeah, sorry. Yes, correct. Yeah, so
And they're all
We're still, we're still working on all three of them.
Still working on.
Yep, we're getting close, but we're working on all three.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, uh, any other questions for the city administrator? Hearing none, we'll go to the city attorney.
Well, hello, uh, council. I'm glad you're having a small day there. Uh, I'm stuck over here in Maui for a couple more weeks, uh, but uh I have been working, I, you know, hard at it. This is a tough place to do and I was in, uh, been participating in union negotiations, uh, uh, that for the council meeting and and Thursday, uh, I actually have thirty cases in court uh, before Judge Wolf. The bad news is my court starts at eight thirty, which was four thirty in the morning over here, but I'm sure you guys are feeling really bad for me. That's all I have.
I can say this is just wrong that we're sitting here and you're sitting there.
Does anyone have any questions for the city attorney? All right, uh, go do whatever you're doing.
Thanks.
Uh, any department heads have anything to bring forward? Answer is no. Uh, in your packets, you guys had the police, fire EMS monthly report uh, for December, uh, the police report for December and the police annual report for uh twenty twenty one. Reports.
I want to just comment on this. I I like that. That's, that was very interesting. Thank you for it. That was very interesting.
The one thing I did find interesting is is the calls seem to have uh went up dramatic, well, not dramatically, but some months dramatically throughout the year, but as a general rule, they were basically the same, except for the months that were extremely much larger.
It is interesting looking at this.
Yeah, I I get caught up myself because I can look at my sales from week to week and you, what did we do wrong? But in your case, it's what did somebody else do wrong?
Yeah, it was pretty consistent, except for weird spikes. Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, I it it is getting busier in some ways.
I I would be too. I've, uh, it it's amazing what I see when, you know, just going around town or whatever, even being cold. And, you know, people are not necessarily out and about. Seeing the officers are out about talking to people outside the school and you know, the activities that you guys have done throughout the course of the year, I think it's fantastic being, you know, proactive policing rather than reactive policing. So I I appreciate that.
You guys do a wonderful job.
All right. Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Um, I have absolutely nothing. Boards, commissions. All right, we'll go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward? If not, just a reminder to you guys that uh uh, well, actually correspondence, we have Arrowhead Transit, your service notification, uh, service notice, International Falls Public Library Meeting Information. Uh, our next council meeting will be February seventh. And uh, on the last day of the month, uh, the thirty first, just a reminder to everyone, there is going to be fireworks at seven AM. Uh, so once everyone hits Facebook at seven oh three, what was that? Now you know, it's fireworks for the Arrowhead one thirty five. So with that being said, uh, we have no other business. I will adjourn this meeting.